To the flag, to the United States of America. And to the Republic where we stand. One nation, indivisible. Justice for all.
Thank you all. All right, we have a quickie 735 endorsement of the site plan and water resource special permit for 500 King Street.
Okay, one thing I handed out this evening was an updated draft. I had forgotten the wording about the up to eight seats for food service. So I got it downloaded in. Sherry and the engineer looked it over and they didn't have any additional comments.
Okay, so the conditions are groundwater enough to fall below drinking water standards. Egress is adequate for common and closing fire protection. Low groundwater drainage will be adequate to serve the site. No significant nuisances or hazards or congestions will be created. No substantial harm to the neighborhood or dedication from the intended building by law. End of city for up to eight hundred, the special permit. Pedestrian crosswalk can be installed for public safety. All lighting to conform by department. What about semi-inbound groundwater? Do we do the no zoning DIC thing anymore or do we stay away from that one?
We've got that as number three, condition number three.
Yeah, I guess I should probably get it.
Yeah.
All right, anyone have any questions about this?
Yes, do you have the outside seating?
Eight patrons inside, we didn't limit them to the outside.
No, I have a paying bench right now because I have, I've had it for years. Just want to make sure that you guys know I have it.
Oh yeah, yeah, in fact, I encourage you to have more.
Okay.
We need to put that in writing.
No, I don't think we...
It's not limited by outside seating.
Yeah, we're not counting the outside seating as seating for him. He can freely do what he wants unless it becomes a nuisance.
The new zoning bylaw encourages exterior patio and outside seating.
Okay.
Yeah, he's kind of ahead of the curve.
We're not going to put a number or anything.
Will you be connecting the back to the IBM property?
I've been working on that right now, actually. We cut a lot of the brush down and we put a lot of bark mulch down, so we cleaned it up pretty nice.
What about you not touching the sign?
What sign?
You're not changing the mobile sign, are you?
Not to my knowledge.
All right, good, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so that's number eight by Richard. Pedestrian crosswalk. It's all day pedestrian safety from the existing sidewalk on King Street to the building. Funny, I guess that's not exactly the way. Well, that's the back, the back one, so it's the back parking lot, including the IBM.
Yeah, that's what I've been working on. You asked me to look into that. So we actually did a lot of work on it today.
I'd like to take a motion to approve the special permit water resource for 500 King Street. Moved in seconded, all those in favor?
Aye. Who's the second?
I moved, I don't know.
The second?
Thank you.
Seems a good order.
Done.
And then the site plan would be exactly the same. We don't have to do the findings. Exactly the same conditions?
Yep, exactly the same conditions on the site plan. All those in favor of approving the site plan as discussed by? Aye.
Who made the motion to second it?
Second, third, fourth.
Aye.
Aye.
I'm way down the end here. Sometimes, sometimes I can't choose.
Fingers out here he is.
Okay, that's it. Now I have to throw everybody out.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
My lot for you guys, and thank you.
For a couple minutes, we just have to go to an executive session.
Thank you very much.
And give it a little... Be too sweet, Mel.
All right, you got it.
Good luck.
Just get a good laugh.
Thank you very much.
I will, yeah, good.
Look, Gary. Just for a couple minutes, we have to go to an executive session about pending litigation with Moore Land.
Good luck, please.
Thank you. Please give us...
Um, so roll call votes to...
Yes.
Somebody moved?
Some vote.
One, second?
Second.
Yeah, I'm favorite, aye.
One, two, zero, and return to... And return to regular session immediately following that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So, do you want to do a roll call?
Yeah.
We're out of executive session. Okay? What's next? Can we go home?
No, we haven't. Eight, uh...
Eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock. A little late. Sorry.
Thank you all.
Chris, thank you very much. Sorry you had to come out for this.
I know.
That's what you get the big money for, right?
And maybe that guy with the cane actually wanted to be here. I don't know if it's called marijuana. How was she?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, public hearing, zoning amendment. The town of Wilton Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, March 28, 2013, at 8 p.m. in room 103 of the Shattuck Street Town Hall. 37 Shattuck Street, Wilton, Mass. To consider zoning amendment according to Mass. law. Chapter 48, Section 5. The proposed amendment is to revise the density calculation section of open spaces.
No, wrong one.
Wrong one, yes.
I'm sorry.
What have you been smoking?
I don't know, it's what was handed.
I think the marijuana bill is next.
It did sort of surprise me.
It was in the wrong address.
Yeah. Yes. Thought that was very interesting.
There you go.
Okay, the right hearing. Yeah, that's the 28th. I mean, that threw me off then, open space. Okay, here we go.
My apologies.
Town Littleton Planning Board will hold a public meeting on Thursday, April 25th, 2013, at 8:00 PM in room 103 of the Shattuck Street Town Hall, 37 Shattuck Street, Littleton, Mass. To consider a zoning amendment according to Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 5. The proposed amendment is to establish a temporary moratorium on medical marijuana treatment centers. The full text of the proposed bylaw is on the town, available at the town clerk and planning board office, and can be viewed during their office hours or online at www.littletonma.org. Any person interested on, or wishing to be heard on the proposed zoning amendment should appear at the time and place designated. The Town of Littleton does not discriminate on the basis of disability. Further assigned transaction of this hearing can be provided for the hearing impaired upon request by contacting the planning board office at (978) 540-2425, one week prior to meeting date. Don McIver, clerk.
Thank you.
Small print for legal.
This is basically just a hearing to go over a moratorium. The state has just, as everyone knows, mandated that medical marijuana can be grown in the state, except we have no rules or regulations to abide by, the siding of it, or the management of it, and who can grow it and who can't. So until since times, we have a little more guidance from the state on this issue. Most cities and towns in Massachusetts are taking the tact of putting a one-year moratorium on it while the state gets their act together, and all we're doing is following what all the other cities and towns are. It gives us basically a year for the state to issue guidelines and regulations so we can put a warrant article on next year for a bylaw to figure out where we're going to cite it. Board, have any questions about that?
No. I have no questions. I have a question.
Okay.
If somebody, if somebody can get a prescription for medical marijuana for themselves, can they grow it themselves on their own property in this town?
I don't think it's growing marijuana.
Yeah. The regulations, which have yet to come out, and won't come out until after the town meeting, when we have to vote on the moratorium, will specify how that's done. That is one of the issues. It's a very complex law. And I did go to a public health hearing with planning boards, boards of health, and police departments. It was fairly complex. So that was one of the issues that was raised, but as to how it's done, how one disposes of the nonusable parts is all specified and has to be figured out. So all that has yet to be worked out by Department of Public Health, and it's truly a very complex thing. It isn't the law you would like to have that would make it easy. It's what was voted and was given, and it'll take quite a while to figure out the details.
Do you have any questions?
No, I'd just point out that this particular ruling doesn't talk about the growing of marijuana, it talks about the location of treatment centers.
Actually, treatment centers includes...
You have to...
Well, I just don't say anything about growing it.
Well, not in that short one, in the forty, fifty page draft regulation.
You actually have to be involved in the treatment centers, be able to even grow it, is what the state is trying to link them both together.
They have this at the Massachusetts Planters Association, MASH, and the form that I intended said that if somebody can't get to a treatment plant center, or is too far away from a treatment center, then they will be issued a special permit that they can grow their own, on their own premises. And that's a big problem for landlords in Boston right now, and elsewhere. Is that correct?
That's correct.
This is about the commercial growing of medical marijuana.
It is.
What are you talking about?
It's a mixture.
The siding of commercial...
So this, just to be clear, this doesn't exempt the Town of Littleton from people growing marijuana?
No, it doesn't exempt any...
That's not our, that's not our issue. Our issue is the commercial growing of medical marijuana. And that's what this is about.
So are you, so what is your question to support, or are you...
Oh, no, I want to see this thing enacted as soon as possible.
Anyone have any questions? Ma'am?
Hi, Ann Lurie, Vice Chair, Littleton Board of Health. And my background is, I have thirty years in public health. I'm a trained infectious disease epidemiologist, and I've been working with the state on this, and going to trainees in terms of trying to understand this. It is very complex, as Don mentioned. However, the moratorium will affect the whole law. It will not just affect part of the law. Your board is overseeing the zoning. However, the moratorium, and the reason why I'm here, is because it will actually affect the whole law, which impacts public safety, public health, zoning, and the like. And I do have a prepared statement, but I know other people may want to speak as well, but I wanted to just set that up so that you understand what's going on here in terms of the moratorium. It does affect everything.
So would that affect, shut off people from growing it themselves?
It's not going to shut off illegal people from growing illegally, but it is going to affect that piece that does allow people to grow on it, because it's going to affect the whole law. It doesn't affect part of it. It's a moratorium on the whole law, correct, Mark? Yeah. So it's the whole, it's the whole thing.
But the law just got passed. I mean...
You said you had to prepare a statement?
They didn't, they passed the law...
How long is it?
They passed the law without...
It's very short.
Without figuring out...
And to the point.
Would you like to...
Wait a second. They passed the law without putting any rules and regulations, and now we're just trying to...
The law is the rules and regulations.
But the, there are draft regulations that the Department of Public Health has issued. They will not issue the final regulations until after town meeting, and in order to study how the town should address it, we need time.
We haven't drafted the regulations yet for our town, but the state regs have been drafted.
Do you want to read your statement?
I would just like to share that I personally, and us as a board, are for the moratorium. We actually may need more than a year, and we can address that in a year's time, to properly ensure that the law succeeds in its intent, and also that it has little negative effect, because there's great room here for negative effect. The law is new and in preliminary draft form, so most likely it will change over the next year. We don't want to spend a lot of time drafting regs for our local town and different boards just to have to change them in the next year, and then communicate those changes. So that's one main reason for the moratorium. Also, the medical marijuana law has marked public health, public safety, and zoning concerns, and as such, the law will prompt regulations from various boards, and we would be wise to coordinate those efforts as much as possible to eliminate as many loopholes as possible. And in general, public health programs take a year to develop when there isn't a new law under, under its belt. So with this new law piece, and then you're developing a new program, you're looking at several years before we really have a solid program that's coordinated. And boards don't meet every week. They meet sometimes once a month, sometimes twice a month, so we want to be sure that it's coordinated and effective, whatever the different boards choose to do. So thank you.
And do you also want to mention that the Board of Health meeting, the intent to really extend the moratorium, the desire to extend it for another half year, but it was checked with town council, and felt that it wasn't possible to change?
Well, town council couldn't do it at this moment, but as I said earlier, it would be probably wise to, to have it extended, given the... And I haven't read the whole law yet. I've just read through part of the draft of it, and whoops. And it would be wise.
Right. So when it comes up again, we may be in a position of considering extension.
Does anyone in the audience have any questions to present?
Thank you.
Okay. Well, how's the board? The board, I want to take a motion to support this article.
Support the hearing.
Correct. Second. All right. I want to take a motion to vote for the plenary board to endorse Article 21 at Town Meeting, Article 21.
Yeah.
Twenty-one at Town Meeting. Are we presenting it on the floor, as the selectmen are presenting it?
It's a zoning amendment.
All right, so it's us, all right. All right. So I want to take a motion to vote and bring this to Town Meeting Floor for endorsement.
And recommend it.
And recommend it to Town Meeting.
Recommended. So moved, second.
Second.
It's Ann.
Ann.
Can I ask you to stay for like fifteen minutes, twenty minutes?
Sure.
Not that there's anything good on TV, but...
For what? I don't watch TV. I'm too busy for TV. What do you need me for?
I want to discuss the other article, the warrant article.
Oh, for the health.
Board of Health issued the, our other article, if you could just stay for a couple...
Open space development.
Okay, which you came in and spoke about. Just so you know...
When we're done.
We did, okay, but we didn't vote for me to give a statement.
That's okay.
So I'm not going to speak officially for the board?
That's fine.
Okay.
Okay. Eight fifteen...
Easier one to read, yeah.
Joint Public Hearing, Chenequ Road, scenic, forty-three Bruce Street, Jimmy Clyde.
Okay. Public hearing, scenic road special permit, forty-three Bruce Street. Town Littleton Planning Board and Tree Warden will hold a joint public hearing on Thursday, April 25th, 2013, at 8:15 PM in room 103 of the Shattuck Street Town Hall, 37 Shattuck Street, to consider the application for a special permit pursuant to the code, the Town of Littleton Scenic Road Bylaw, Chapter 143. Property locations, forty-three Bruce Street. The applicant is seeking a special permit under the Scenic Road Bylaw to allow a new block to twenty-four linear feet of stone wall for a new driveway. Application plans can be viewed at the planning board and town clerk's office during the business hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the proposed plan should appear at the time and place designated. Don McIver, clerk.
Okay. The applicant is not able to be at the meeting. I gave you the sketches, and they're number thirteen in your packet, and there's one in the folder.
This isn't taking up any trees, really? It's just removing all the roadway, right? The snow.
There's some, basically small saplings where the driveway's going, and they're unleafed the wires. Anyone? There's two pine trees that are, like, on the stone wall further down, but they're basically, the trees are on his property. The stone wall's a property line, and they're, they started growing on his property, and they've kind of grown into the stone wall.
Right, it's intertwined, as ladies describe. But shade tree law, which also fits into the scenic stuff, does talk about boundaries, that it's on the boundary. It does get covered. So, and that's one of the things that confused me with this, is that it does seem to be part of the stone wall. I mean, the stone wall's going to have to be reconstructed, but on the shade tree law, it seems to be covered.
But, well, that's where Jim gets to make that determination.
He's taking the stone wall out in a different section. The other trees, if you look at them, they're, they're basically, they grew on his property, and then the stone wall is not a traditional one, it's almost a repainted wall.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I drove by there. I couldn't figure out where it was either. It didn't seem to be posted. Is it supposed to be posted, or...
Because there's no trees coming down, and there's no...
Right.
If there's no public shade trees coming down...
Do you have a problem with any of this?
Well, I know.
So there's no trees, it's just the road, the stone wall. So is he going to turn it in, like, we're making it do all the other ones?
Yeah, he's, I think he's trying for a little bit bigger opening to get construction going, but it'll be weeded down a little bit.
Where are the trees? I mean, it isn't on this map, but where's it, where are they located? Were the nails tacked while intertwined? Trees?
They're more towards the, you're looking at the property from the street to the left side of the property.
Does anything to do, those trees have anything to do with the opening he wants? No?
No.
All right, so it's a moot subject, right?
I totally think it is covered with shade tree. I mean, it sounds like they're, they're in the way, but, you know.
Well, see, we, if you, if you get in, actually read the law, I don't think you have any jurisdiction on this at all, because it says it deals with road reconstruction. He's not reconstructing roads, he's putting a driveway.
Yeah. But it isn't so much the driveway. It, you read the shade tree, and yeah, it says the tree here should be held in the scenic road. Chapter eighty-seven says, like, the shade tree stuff, and, you know...
Where's this dealing with the...
If you, if you look at the tree, the tree is on his property, and, you know, as the tree gets larger, it grows up. You know, seven-eighths of the tree is on his property, and there's roots and stuff coming over, over the stone wall.
Not to mention, if you look at the, if you look at the player, the tree is definitely on, the whole thing's on the property. This is Bruce Street.
What, what do you see there?
Does that have to do with us?
No. It is not listed at all.
Well, yeah, but here's Bruce Street, and the fence is way back on his property. So anyway, does the board have any problem with allowing him?
No.
How much, how many feet does it take, does he want to take out?
I think it said, it went twenty-four, but I think it said twenty-five.
Twenty-five feet. And he's going to rebuild it and turn it in, like, with Astor Hall?
Well, you can condition that, and there's a draft decision that you can, for whatever conditions you want.
Before you vote, if I could say something, I'd say eighteen feet on this map.
Excuse me?
Eighteen feet is the driveway, yeah.
And on the front here, it says twenty-four feet.
You need stuff on either side of it, so to make it, the, the turn, radiuses of the driveway.
Do you want, do you want to put your name in for the record?
I can shut down.
Yeah, all keys are at forty-four Bruce Street. I'm the one that had it move it, so it wouldn't ruin a well that I have there.
Okay.
And, and do you have a...
I have no problem.
Feeling one way or another?
But, you know, I, mailbox has been there.
Yes.
Hosts since nineteen fifteen. I'd like it to stay there, and I'd like, I just wanted to make sure we've gone through this before with the Board of Health, you know, that the septic tank will each be to the rear, which everybody agreed to, and there was just a problem of this driveway, but the only problem I had, I see it's twenty-four feet on this, and it's eighteen feet on this, I don't know which one is which.
I think it's going to be twenty-four, because it's going to be radiuses to go into the driveway.
Will that affect your poll?
It may be up to twenty-four.
It will not accept, will not affect the well at all.
Oh, your, your office?
Well, you know, there's, there's two blue markers that are there on a stick. I say blue markers, a piece of plastic on that, which is the, apparently where the driveway is going, or somebody developed the building, says that's where the driveway is going.
And is your mailbox in that opening?
No, it's not. My mailbox is about three feet away from that.
The developer said he moved it, but Mr. Keys asked him.
Oh, nice. But you're happy with this now? Good.
Yeah, I'm happy with it. The only notice that I have since eighteen is it's twenty-four.
He just needs a little, up to twenty-four, so he doesn't want to come back and answer. Oh, that's usually why they ask for more.
As long as he leaves your mailbox alone, you're okay?
And my well.
And your well.
Okay. Peter, which side of your house is this, this new house going to go on?
It's, it's right in front of me.
Facing your house, is it to the left or to the right?
No, it's right directly opposite of my house, first of all.
So this is right across the street from you?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's going to be another McMansion, sitting on a hill, looking down on me.
And you've reviewed this with a developer?
Yeah, with a builder.
And you're okay?
No, I haven't.
Just a second.
Okay. All right, so does the board have any problem, at our meeting on the twenty-fifth, somebody made a motion to grant the scenic railway special, to allow up, up to twenty-four feet of stone wall to be removed and replaced at forty-three Blue, Blue Street, the condition of the stone removed to be reused on site to rebuild the remaining stone wall, and return the walls, return the walls along the portion of the driveway. The board will entertain that motion?
Certainly.
Okay, so moved, all those in favor?
Aye, aye.
All right.
One, one final question on this. It's, it looks like they're building a lot on a, with a hundred and sixteen foot of project, or it says a hundred and fifty foot of project, which is it?
Hundred and fifty. One sixteen plus thirty-four.
It has a form also.
Okay. I'm okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We have an eight-thirty informal discussion with three-thirty Pink Street. The additional... The additional parking at the Congregational Church.
It's getting hot in here.
Yeah, it's very hot, yeah.
How do we?
Throw the bricks through the window?
Open the door.
Carol, would you like to come up and enlighten us a little bit?
Okay. I'm Warren Carroll and we have Rob Moody, we're, we're with the Capitol Campaign Committee for the Congregational Church and we'd like to present to you some concepts that have been brought to our attention relative to the surface area that we will be creating when we embark upon our upgrade of our church, expansion of our church. Will be in design during the fall and will hopefully for construction start in spring. The, so may I just point out, the church is shown here and shown in bold are the two additions. The other part is to improve the parking lot. This is Sunday School and Music Parish Hall. We're not doing any work to the sanctuary, we're modernizing the kitchen as well. Church's been around since eighteen forty and we want it to be around for another hundred and seventy years. Our existing parking lot extends to about here. Then at the edge of pavement and we'll be extending it out here. This is mostly to, we have people parking on the state highway now, so this way we can get them all inside.
The, the, we're just up to the front here, right?
And, yeah, we're gonna reduce the, the front, immediately in front of the church and change that to grass, so that kind of reduces the pervious area. But, right now, the existing situation before construction, we're at forty-four percent impervious area. That's shown right down here. This is the existing condition.
Thank you.
Okay? The, when we add in the, the increase in parking, about a hundred and thirteen cars, I think, and we add in this addition that for the new access into the Sunday School area and this new addition here, which is nursery, music ministry, deacons, that kind of thing, we end up with fifty-two percent impervious covering.
Right.
Right there. Okay? So we're at forty-four percent. We're going to fifty-two percent. It's my understanding in discussing this with our engineer that the town's limit is around thirty percent, that you can handle with a special permit. And our engineer indicated that if we could find a way to gain some kind of control through either an easement or buying development rights with our neighbor, Craig Bukowski, the dentist, that, that would help, in effect, increase our land area and then drive the percentages down. I've met with Craig and, and he's on board with doing something with this, he wants to. He's been a good neighbor for, since he's lived there and we wish to maintain that. In talking with Craig, he would much prefer the concept of some kind of an easement or development rights or something like that. And he also went out to say that he preferred the concept that's shown in this sketch number one versus sketch number two. Just let me explain what those are. If we were to try to achieve the, just maintain the status quo, the forty-four percent, that's the size of the land that we would have to gain control of, right there, that little area there. If we wanted to achieve the thirty percent limit, this bigger area is what we would require. And if we wanted to achieve the fifteen percent, which is you're allowed to do by right, I understand, then we would have to have control of that. Sketch number two is just a variation on a theme. In this case, our engineer looked at what is most of the wetlands versus kind of the uplands that he has and most of the heavy-duty wetlands are in this area here. Okay? And there are all kinds of combinations you could make to, to achieve these land areas. Craig Bukowski likes this kind of concept here. So, what we are asking is, could the, this be achieved through some kind of an easement approach as opposed to outright ownership of the land?
No, you have to own the land.
Yeah, and that was surprising to our engineer, but, you know, we have to own the land.
Well, Bruce knows that, as I told you, Bruce, he did the same deal for Dover Saddle where the Dover Saddle bought the land next to the old Chase Farm and it danced at Dover Saddle and they got their percentage previous.
So the question I have just hearing that is that with the wetlands, you're not gonna be able to, your neighbor's not gonna be able to go on it easily. What, how would affect them to be sold, the wetlands, you know, should be inexpensive?
Oh, can I ask?
Yes.
What about what you and I talked about?
I'm, I'm coming to that. I'm coming.
I'm not thoughtful. You know, you're losing a lot of tape on it and people probably sleep around.
If they choose to go to sleep, fine.
I'm just kidding.
I, I, I just. So, he wants to work with us, but he would, he wants to, you to know that he would prefer the concept of an easement or a deed and restriction, something like that. That is not without precedent, by the way, because, you know, the little house across the street from the church? When they had to build their leachant system, the town actually granted them an easement to use town land. So, there, there is some precedent of allowing this kind of thing. We say that we have no interest and are prepared to write into an agreement with Craig Bukowski that we're not putting any structures there, we're not looking to do anything with it, we're just looking to have right to the land, that's all. So, it, it would be a bear to try to get that permitted anyways because it is a wet meadow under the, the wetlands per view. Okay, so, because I'm, you know, fat, dumb and stupid, I, I brought this information to, on an informal basis, to Mark and Mark put forth a rather intriguing proposal or a concept, which we had never thought about. It's our understanding that the town wants to build some soccer fields across the street on the Morgan property and is in need of some parking. And it was put to us, would, would the church be interested into working out some kind of agreement with the town to allow people using the soccer fields to park on the church property? And so we brought that to the, the executive committee of the church the other night and I was rather surprised at the, the range of opinions that were expressed, okay? Some thought it was, hmm, that might work. Others thought that there's no way that could work. But the big concern that was brought up, and this is something that has to be dealt with, is there was a concern that while we were obviously have the use and have no problem using, get first use of the parking lot, say for Sundays, you know, when we worship, the thought said, well, what about, you know, weddings and funerals, which are very often done on Saturdays? Is that, and that's also, we understand, a very popular day for sports. We would have, how would we control that so that we would, you know, preclude the people from using the soccer parking there so that we could have the funeral or have the wedding? And we don't.
Let me, let me start right there. Mark?
What?
There's no way Park and Wright is gonna have an army kid cross the state highway to go play soccer. My kids don't cross that street to go play soccer, okay? It's not, no way.
I just, off, off of it out there because there's obviously the issue with doing something that the, this is no different than St. Anne's, other than it's all.
Which they just had an incident in St. Anne's parking lot with the soccer.
And not only that, it's half a mile in from the road.
Yeah. It's far.
It would at least give us the option again to build.
Well, how does that alleviate their coverage area?
Well, we, we could do something with, with the land on the outside to get them down to the.
Well, now you're giving them town property and.
Maybe we just, we just did it temporarily until we could get, but the problem we have with doing anything at the Morgan Field is can't do anything till we solve how to get parking in there.
They'd have to construct a parking lot.
This would be a temporary solution till we could get our own parking in there, that's all I was thinking.
And what do they, and what do they get out of it?
They get, they get the land so that they can use the.
They have to purchase the land.
We would give them the land. We'd work out some sort of deal with them on the land.
I don't think that's.
Did you talk to Park and Wright?
I just made it, I just made it as an offer because they're both right side by, side by side of each other. Something we could do.
Did you, what is? Did you talk to Park and Wright about it?
I did, but it follows, I talked to Warren about it and it follows into the same issue.
You know, given.
St. Anne's, obviously.
Yeah, but you know, the only difference with St. Anne's is the parking lot is juxtaposed, the fields and always cross it.
It doesn't have to be contiguous land?
It has to be, yeah, it doesn't have to be contiguous land. I wanted for them to.
Why can't you use them, why can't you just put permeable pavement?
It's not, they're still at forty-four percent if they stayed at.
You mean they're permeable pavement?
They're adding over there, you know? We don't, as a matter of fact, we don't really allow, cause of permeable pavement.
Why?
Because it has to be permeable so you can collect the oil and put, to drain it, to, for breeze crops and things like that.
Have some issues applying.
We, we, we've also been working with our engineers to, what are some of the structural solutions? And, and, and yes, there are structural solutions that collect the stormwater, treat the stormwater, that type of thing.
What I also told Mr. Carroll is I don't think the town as a town would have an issue if the church wanted to expand it even though it's at fifty-two. I still didn't think he needed to buy Mr. Kowski's property. All I was saying is that while he was building this, it would be a nice solution.
I don't, I mean, me personally, I don't see why we wouldn't give them an exception.
That's exactly what I'm saying. I told him that from the, from the get-go.
We're not going through all this. We don't, we don't think.
It's a church, they, they tried to move the property, it didn't work out on top, they want to improve their property. I mean.
This is an unusual situation.
It is, but I'm not.
Right, the, the board does have some experience with redevelopment of sites. If you remember Distribution Drive, you allowed a much higher percentage impervious there because the underlying improvement they did for water quality overrode this strict percentages. So you have some lead right there.
Couldn't they engineer?
They could.
For improving the water quality, which I think is where you're going.
It's a benign, I told him he was gonna get an area, didn't need to buy Mr. Kowski's property. Anyway, I just asked if it would solve our.
And, and we looked at.
And I understand, I told him about it.
Are you trying to avoid that engineering cost associated?
No, 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 not at all. We, we recognize that we have to do best management practices no matter what. And, and probably, I took, you know, Mark's proposal as, in the same vein as Bruce's proposal was was you should consider getting together with Craig Bukowski and seeing if you can work and deal with him. So, you know, and so that, that's called this option A and the parking thing is option B. But no matter what, you know, we're, we're gonna engineer this for best management practices. I am getting an education on permeable pavement and those kinds of structural solutions. It does add a fair amount of cost to the, you know, the, the.
Well, I mean, no, I mean, look, that's just one suggestion. If you guys can engineer it so that you are improving that water to such a degree that rolling off your, your permeable surfaces and, you know, then I don't, I don't object to it.
And, and there are some solutions, by retentionist solutions there. Actually, I was at a conference yesterday and there was the head of DPW for Worcester talked about what he did in his town, he had so-called tree filters, which are really trees in some.
Alright, but that's.
Well, it's a solution.
No, I know, we're gonna let the engineer come.
Well, and I'm trying to convey some ideas that were mentioned that people had dealing with stormwater. One's so-called tree pits, which is not like, it's a pit with trees to reduce the nitrogen and phosphorus. Also Scott Horstley, Horstley Witten was there, this is one of the top things they do. And according to the person from Worcester DPW, so well, the tree pit thing is about twenty-seven thousand for the tree, did some work in for the medium, but Scott Horstley said, well, for something like this, realizing you were coming up with this, you know, to treat an acre lot, being able to from ten thousand to two hundred thousand, depending what you did. But one of the things he does do is work with Mass Autobahn, does a design, designs roughly around ten thousand. Then they work with volunteers to actually do the work. Now, he could also be there to coordinate activity or someone else could do that.
Wait, wait, you're not, you're not.
But that may give you a solution for improving the water quality, which.
Can we go back to the?
The only issue here is the percentage.
Projects here.
This was just mentioned, this is the project.
The problem, I know, but we're not pitching that they use some engineer, they should, they hire some person.
I'm, I'm talking about possible solutions, just as we usually have.
The only issue here, because they're gonna do best management practices, whether the, whether the board cares that they're gonna go from forty-four to fifty-two, that's the direction Mr. Carroll wants to know right now. And I'm saying.
Under the stipulation that the engineering starts at the water quality of the runoff is improved and that's it.
Do we have a problem with letting them go up there?
No.
No.
If you're calling the board, I'd say no.
And we'd, we'd want some plan back as to how we can.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah. After, honestly, yeah, this is the file.
Can you make a motion?
No, we don't need to, we can just send them on as well, this is informed.
This is an informal meeting, that's what I'm, sort of to be. But we clearly understand that we have to basically prove to, to this board that what we are proposing is reasonable and proper and that will be the next thing to do.
As long as you go down that road, probably not gonna have a problem.
Exactly, that's all we want.
That's your do.
Now, Warren, does this, it, it appears to me that you probably don't need any, any kind of agreement.
No, not at all.
And, and all I'm saying, I was very pleased with Craig Bukowski saying, we wanna work with you if you have the need and.
Yeah.
Straight up.
If you don't wanna buy something. We'll be up to it.
Well, we, we would hope to buy it for all of us.
Yeah. Would you want one of these here?
Yeah, I'll have those, thank you.
Thank you.
Craig will sell you that land?
I don't know, I don't know. Warren, he's been a real good neighbor, he really has.
He's gonna lose you back here.
Well, the, we, we have, we have executed our contract with the site engineer and I would say it'd be mid-summer when we call.
Wish much to God.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you. If you want these, I'd like to.
How am I said hello, if you get a, a cat?
I will.
Good kids.
I'll just make one comment.
I don't think I'm allowed to take that one. If those deals get built.
Oh, okay. I thought.
Across the street.
That would be right from first to copy.
No, no, no.
Can I copy that? And I'll promise to bring it back, I'll give you my two weeks. We will bring this back after we get a copy.
Thank you.
I mean, can see if you have anything else?
The last thing the board do wanna do is have a child crossing that street.
I agree, I'm just saying, when a mother shows up late and parking's full, she's gonna turn around and say, oh, there's some spots at the church, I'm gonna park there and run across. I mean, it's just, it's gonna happen, you know? Look at Forford, you see? That gets overflowed.
Oh, you're right.
So it's just that, you know, you can't prevent.
Wow, name out.
Well, I was working at the turn, but that's where the sun came through. Oh, I know, it sucks.
Well, this is for that, the gravel pit in the front yard?
That's, that's correct. We just moved the milling over because conservation wanted us to.
Because it was closed.
Yeah, a year ago, you had approved with conditions, site plan for four spectacles on the road. They went to conservation and redesigned a little bit. He's come back with revised plans to be endorsed and after, then I can issue the site plan approval for, based on these new plans.
There's no signature, boy.
I, that's why I put the note on there.
Okay, we're gonna have that.
Oh.
Or you could just have a week, I can just have a side note.
Just have a side.
It's just. It's the top one?
I just wanna go home.
Yeah.
Which one, just the top one?
Just the top one is fine. I'll refer to the set. If that's okay with you.
That's okay with me.
Do you want them all? Do you want a signature on every page or just the cover?
Just the cover.
Okay.
Can you refresh my memory here?
This is off a special phone load behind Estonia. It's, it's a gravel pit.
Okay.
And user, per the storage, once added five houses. And you said purpose for it, once added five houses.
And this is behind Alex.
Yes. I'm good. I wanna take up two more minutes of your time, and then we can leave. We don't have another meeting for a town meeting, and I wanna discuss the open space pilot we have that's been shot at by the Board of Health and the Selectmen, and I wanna call the board to see what they wanna do about it. Normally, I would pull the article, because there's too much confusion, do it over, bring them in so that there's no confusion, I know that Board of Health thinks we're trying to step on their toes, and maybe we should have lightened up and not put, you know, four bedrooms and just left it as per test. In hindsight, we didn't, we didn't think they were gonna react the way they did. So, the question is, do we wanna pull it? Now, the reason I'm hesitant to pull it, but I wanna talk to the board about it, is we're gonna have no protection from now until fall town meeting. And you remember the issues we had with Harmony about not having a look at shared systems? There's a large parcel in this town that right now grows something on it that is being marketed for development, that is probably the biggest piece that we're gonna see in the next few years, that we're gonna, we've had the potential of running into the same issues that we ran into with Harmony.
And which one is this?
With piece of land, I'd rather not say, I think you guys kind of all have a good idea.
Yeah.
Okay? So, our issue was to put that in there at town council's advice so that we could ask the developer, if we wanted to, if we felt the need to, to show us perks. That was what the whole goal is, it's gone sideways between what Board of Health thinks it's all about, and the Selectmen didn't support it either. Really don't wanna argue with it on town meeting floor, but I do wanna have the discussion whether we think it's important enough to argue on town meeting floor, or we just wanna pull it and not worry about.
Well, I think you could, you could look at it two ways, all right? You could say the people who are objecting to it, object to it because they don't want us to have that kind of discretion over development, right?
Okay. Which property are you talking about?
You know, property.
I don't know which one you're talking about.
The one that could visit.
And I know who's after that now that you mentioned it earlier to me, and I don't, to me, I think it's a good idea for us, somebody to be able to have some form of control of the number of lots so you can get into that, I think it's a good idea, regardless, it's my brother-in-law that's looking at that.
But having said that, right? The open space, the way our zoning, zoning bylaws are constructed, anything over ten acres, we could compel them to do an open space anywhere inside.
That's right.
So, it's not like someone can just say, hey, if there's forty acres, I can block, you know, forty houses on forty acres, that's not, that's not what's gonna happen.
No, it is, that's, that's exactly what Harmony did.
No, that's not what they did.
Sure they did.
Nope.
No, they didn't.
They filed an open space plan with us.
It did, but we didn't get a chance to look at whether the open space or any of those lots already could. We never saw one perk, neither did the Board of Health.
They weren't able to cover all twenty acres.
Wait a second, Mar, on the piece of, forget the, if you take the fourteen acres of the Solomon is out, out of thirty-six acres, how many acres did they have? Fourteen from thirty-six is what?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two, and how many lots did they get? Twenty-two.
Nineteen.
Twenty-five.
I think it was nineteen.
Twenty-two.
Open space is more lots.
Open space was more lots, twenty-two lots, and they got every single possible inch of land done in open space without even a contention of, we couldn't even look at the fact that there was ledge there.
But your contention is that fourteen acres covered by Solomon.
That was never gonna be built on, you know that was a no.
I know that, but you don't consider that open space.
No, I don't consider that open space.
See, I do.
No, it's not open.
You're gonna have the same issue.
You take the twenty, you take the thirty-six acres and get rid of the fourteen acres.
If you get to town meeting and you start talking about that site, you're not gonna get anywhere.
But the point is, that's what, that's what drove the whole thing, now that the moratorium's off and common systems may come down the pipe.
And recent updates to Title V.
We need something that gives us a base number to go on.
So, what are you gonna get out, I mean, what are you gonna get out of having an argument without broad base, but you could still win on town four, you know, it doesn't mean you're gonna lose.
I mean, you could show that Framingham uses it, and they don't have a problem with Board of Health and the Selectmen.
Framingham model hasn't been tested.
Yes, it.
Not, not, not in this way, not in this way. If, if a developer wants to come in and put a sewer system in, and doesn't wanna go and perk every lot.
We're not asking.
No, 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 that's.
No, we're not asking.
To try to find that every lot is viable.
No, we're just.
No, 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 that's exactly what the Framingham law was designed to prevent, was that even though there were sewer, even though there were sewer, which Framingham asked, you still had to show that the law was perkable.
Well, here's where I'm going with that. If they have a sewer, and we compel them to prove that every lot is perkable, that's gonna compel a builder to go out and hire a company to do perk tests on, on let's just say a hundred lots, all right? That's at fifteen hundred bucks, that's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Now, what developer in his mind would go and spend that kind of money when he doesn't need to, if he's gonna put a sewer system in?
Someone's making a twenty-five percent margin anyways.
And also, is what he's saving.
No, he spent that on litigation, because he doesn't need to.
No, he won't spend it on litigation, because he doesn't have the time.
They already litigated that in Framingham, and they won.
Not this particular.
Yeah, that's the whole issue.
No, trust me, I checked.
We asked town council, he supported it.
It wasn't argued on the town, on the sewer versus the compelling of a person to.
But the key point you're missing here is, we're not telling them that they actually have to put a septic system under, we're just using it to calculate the number of lots.
Exactly.
In order to do that, they have to go out, they have to, they have to hire a company to. They have to get the Board of Health guy to come over and examine the hole once they get.
That's if we have an issue with the land.
They don't have to get the Board of Health guy.
If we didn't have an issue with the land, the land looked great, they did sporadic perk tests.
How can you justify it? Or how can you be sure that?
We're not asking for every single lot, we're asking for sporadic perk tests to show us the viability of the ground. If you have ledge sticking up ten feet off, it was underwater, we know that's not gonna perk, and yet they can still use that in their calculations. Once they get rid of the twenty percent, boom, they can still use the.
And some of the large lots propose.
There's new ways of doing it.
Most of the little town is ledge and walk.
There's new ways of doing this. Of what, restricting, restricting the number of lots? What, name it.
The Massachusetts Planners Association has a whole model now for dealing with this open space business, and it was, they, there was a whole program on that last year at the, at the.
Well, this one this afternoon, but that isn't what we have before.
The point is, we're exposed, we're exposed right now.
All I'm saying here is there's, there are new models out there, and it's worth looking at.
All I, all I'm asking the board is, is it yes or no? Do we wanna bring it to town meeting floor and discuss it on town meeting floor, or do you wanna pull it? That's what I want.
And I think what we're discussing could be the next.
You can still pull it off the floor, right?
Yeah.
The thing is, if you go to the floor with something and it fails miserably, because there's, there's so many, you gotta convince people that this is bulletproof, and it's not right now, you're not gonna be able to do that.
When you say it's not. See, the majority of people in town don't own big tracts of land.
They're gonna wanna be protected, they're gonna develop.
The reason why this one.
Argue against what we say, then they're, they're gonna see doubt, and the more doubt they see, the people, people just not gonna vote for something.
Yeah, but Board of Health came here, and they yelled at us because they thought we were stepping on their toes.
See if that's possible.
Well, if, the way I read this, is if we, that we would have, because they're asking them to show that we could have.
I just wanted the whole floor to know.
Yeah, not for purposes of constructing a system.
Richard.
Richard.
The bottom line for all this is, is if it goes, when you're screwing, in reality, you don't, we have the option of screwing a lot of land owners, because if they got a hundred, like, a hundred acres and fifty of it is swamp, and, you know, they say they can build a hundred houses, well, you really can't. You can only build fifty, because fifty acres is swamp. Can't build, you shouldn't be able to include land that is not buildable, whether it be swamp or whether it be boulders.
But the new models take into account that kind of.
We don't have that, we can't do that for town.
I'm pretty sure I was talking.
Go ahead.
So, I think this would be a good tool, that you have to show me you could build something on that, on that rock conventionally, and then you can include that in your, in your grand calculation. I think that's a fair assessment.
Achilles heel to that, is if a developer doesn't even want a septic system, he's going, he's going for a sewer system.
Doesn't matter.
I don't care, I don't care. Stop, stop, stop. This is the fifth time you've brought that up. Town council sat there right there and told you that wasn't true.
When I, when I explained the model that I was talking about, he told me, he told me that I was, that that model that I was discussing hasn't been tested.
But regardless, regardless, what we're trying to do is.
I got my answer. Four people want me to continue with this at town meeting floor, that's what we're gonna do.
I don't have a problem with the town saying, I don't want it to be my decision.
Yeah, let the town say.
I let the town decide if they want to do it this way.
So, then we'll keep it on the Warren.
And, you know, Danny Pegg will never invite me over again, but what the hell.
And I'm not opposed to creating some sort of a mechanism to limit it, and all I'm saying.
Well, this is our mechanism.
All I'm saying is I think this mechanism has, has an Achilles heel with it.
It's the only thing we have.
And we should consider the new.
We don't have the option of considering anything right now. It's a tool, as, as town council says, it's a tool in our toolbox, we start with this, and if we wanna further tweak it, later, further down the road, we do, but at least it gives us, it brings us back to a level playing field, whereas before, before the moratorium lifted, we could ask for something, we could ask for somebody to perk the lot, and they always did it. We never had a problem, everybody did it.